Good evening, everyone. Just so before I kind of get into our normal spiel here, I just want to let you know that we are having the city hall is switching over their audio/video stuff. So we are really just relying on the kind of one camera and mic tonight. So we are going to ask that everybody kind of length your voices a little bit and make sure that we can, that everybody can hear you and that we can try to get you picked up on the audio. And with that, good evening. This is a zoning board of appeals meeting for the city of Edmonton. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for variances, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will make either a final determination or send its recommendations to the city council. I'm Laurie Summers, the current chair. Here with me tonight are board members Matt Rogers, Beth McKlenon, and Andrew Gallagher. We therefore have a court. Also present here tonight from city staff is Melissa Klotz and Ken Cox. It's a formal hearing and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most important is that only one person may speak at a time. Anyone who wishes to address the board may do so at the appropriate time on the regarding matter. Our normal procedure is to hear from the staff and the documents that are required, who will then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. After hearing from the applicant or appellant, any person with a legal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably questioned witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. Next, others who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at the time. When all closing testimony and other statements have been heard, the applicant or appellant will be given an opportunity for a medical or closing statement. All testimony will be under oath, although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence. We request that you please leave your testimony or statement to your own personal knowledge. When you testify or make a statement, please state your name and address and be sure to sign up on the sheet that was provided at the entrance. We are audio and video recording this place, in this space. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we are in the midst of changeovers, so please speak up if you can to make sure that we are properly recorded. And you should also know that we are subject to broadcast. When all of the other testimony, evidence, and statements have been received into the record, the board will close the record and begin its deliberations. We have a fairly full agenda this evening. We do try to end by about 10:30 with our last case around 10:00, so we're going to watch that and try to see how we're going as we get there, and we'll keep you apprised. And with that, we will move into our agenda. And our first item of business is with respect to approval of meeting minutes for August 6th and August 20th. I will note that, given that I am the only member here that was at the August 6th meeting, we have decided to hold over approval of those minutes. But we do have several members from the August 20th meetings, so are there any corrections to the August 20th minutes? I have none. If there's none, or is there a motion?
I would move that we adopt the zoning board of appeal minutes for our August 20th meeting as they have been drafted.
My second motion. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I will note my exception as I am a member. So those minutes are approved and will be carried forward. And all of our businesses, new businesses this evening, so our first item of business is with respect to 2619 Poplar Avenue. And Melissa can read that to our country's right.
Robert Malani, landscape architect, applies for major zoning relief to locate a patio in the front yard of a through lot. The applicant requests a patio in the required front yard where patios are only permitted in required rear yards. Zoning put section 6463B10. The zoning board of appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record are variance application submitted July 18th, 2013, standards form, zoning analysis, plot of survey dated October 28th, 2008, site plan, images from applicant, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, images of property, and spark draft meeting minutes of July 31st, 2013.
Okay, and at this time, if we could swear in anyone who thinks that they might at all wish to speak with us regarding 2619 Poplar Avenue? Do you swear or tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
I do. Thank you. If we could have the applicant or whoever will be presenting? And again, sort of say your name and address, please.
It's Robert Malani with Chalet Landscape Company, senior landscape architect from Chalet, representing Kewlett Ross and twice 19th Poplar.
And if you could sort of run through the book also for us?
The issue at hand is it's a three-story structure of building with very, very small lot, has a double frontage. There's two units attached at the back. They frontage that Poplar and Broadway. The yard, the front yard's very small. They have a driveway, has commutable pavers, and the north property line is about five feet wide. The issue at hand is that there's no place for the family to enjoy their yard without just sitting on the grass. Currently, they're entertaining on the top floor, it's a roof deck, but to get downstairs to the ground level, there's really no place to sit or to have to sit down and enjoy the yard. We're proposing a small patio. It's a regular blue stone, large joints, about 113 square feet diameter, or 113 square feet total. The patio would be pitched to the catch basin facing the northwest and away from the house. Literally just going to house the current circular table, umbrella table with his chairs. The issue is that there is no place for them to enjoy the yard. The yard itself is private. There's a hedge that lines the west property line, so people walking down the parkway really can't see the space from the street. It's hidden from view and currently doesn't, shouldn't create nuisance to the neighborhood. The neighbors have given their blessing to the project and have acknowledged she's once allowed her work in patio construction. Does this get this packet in front of you?
Yes, please do.
First page will show is the current conditions there, which is some plan for a... The second page, however, does show precedent in the neighborhood. There's several locations around the corner that have front yard patios with hedges bordering patios. Considering the circumstances within the neighborhood and the circumstances with homeowner, they're looking to have something similar, like more subtle.
Melissa, could you address the difference between the patio and terrace issue?
Sure. As many of the pictures that the applicant provided show, those are actually considered terraces. Terraces are allowed in front yards and terraces must be at grade level and substantially connected to the principal structure.
Which actually clarifies to get to my question, which is going to be whether or not you guys had looked at scenarios that incorporate extra space into sort of off of the normal walk so that it's not something unusual when the next guy comes in.
We looked at connecting the walkway or the patio to the front entry. It really doesn't really fit because the sidewalk and the driveway are right next to the front door. There's no sense of place with that surface being so close to the house or being connected. The space listed in the first page shows the patio kind of set apart away from plain view from the street, behind the hedge, tucked away where it doesn't really create an issue with the neighborhood. We did look at options by connecting it with the house, but it just doesn't work that way. It didn't allow for the space functionally as well as aesthetically.
Is that, that's a tree right just immediately adjacent to the, to the entryway, a small tree I see? It's a small eight-foot tree right in the front, and that was the landscaping when you said, you know, the reason that you couldn't do the terrace?
Well, there's a, just beyond that, that corner, there's the steps leading up to the front door and there's a railing. And there's a walkway of a carriage walk that borders the driveway, leading up to the front door. Having a patio attached to the house, you'd even have to take the railing down, modify the steps, and then create a hardscape next to another hardscape next to another hardscape, which is difficult to make it work and be functional. Pedestrian access plays a part in that as well.
And is the patio going to have any sort of retaining walls or sides to it, or is it just, just at grade, straight to lawn?
Yeah, patio sits on grade. We're not changing the grade whatsoever. In fact, we're pitching it away from the house and towards that existing catch basin along the property line. So it doesn't really peat on drainage to the neighbors. The open joints of the patio allow water to pass through naturally, has a round base as well, so try to minimize the impact as much as possible. Patio itself, if you look at the front page, the lower right picture shows the table and chairs. The patio literally is just large enough to fit that table and chairs, that's it. We're not making it large enough to accommodate other seating areas, just to have some place to sit in front yard.
And Melissa, is the other side, is that, just so I understand how this is treated, like is the Broadway side considered a rear, the rear yard then?
No, that's considered a front yard.
It's also considered a front yard.
It's no rear yard.
Okay.
And are we okay, this is to Melissa and to you, Mr. Malani, are we okay on the commutable lot cover or anything like that?
That's what I was just checking.
No mention of it in any of the documentation.
Only it is compliant because it is located in the archy zoning district, there's a maximum impervious surface coverage allowed of 60%, and with the proposed patio, it comes out to 58.1%.
Okay. And is the non-ordered blue stone considered, do they get a commutable credit?
It does get a 20% credit.
And do you, Melissa, know of any other reason other than just, I presume there's a general intention in terms of clutter, it's like decluttering, if you will, or whatever that is why this ruling is set in place? Is there anything else that we might be considering?
I think there's, there's no interest to making a certain, on a green space in rental yards, give them a sense of landscaping on the property and the whole intent, isn't that?
To consider it reasonable to impose the condition of the hedge, would that be, would that make sense of?
I mean, it's already there, but...
So it wouldn't impact these owners, but?
I think that would be a reasonable condition so as not to be common nuisance to any neighbors or whoever removed.
Would you make it, if we're going to put a condition like that, can we make it a V hedge or some similar landscape buffer so that some future?
Yeah, I don't think it's like literally the hedge that's there. I mean, who knows, bug attacks if it dies.
Sure, right.
I mean, for those things, but a hedge or landscape?
Buffer or something.
Yeah. I mean, kind of, like, I don't know. Yeah, 30 inch or something, would that be, would that be too?
It's much higher than 30 inches right now.
I know, but what would we, what would we say in the middle? We should apply a minimum height to that, assuming that there could be a scenario that goes away. So the question would be, what would that minimum height be?
A lot of like, a lot of like new plants will come in 30 to 36 inches.
That's correct.
Well, semi-private would be four and a half to five and a half. If you can look over and say semi-private.
I'm saying like a new planting, like if I brought out new plant, it's, I'm not going to get, well, unless it's like, not a variety or something.
You could put in five and six foot shrubs, by the way, create privacy. Any condition you want to create is something that?
It would suggest that in the event of variances that are approved in front yards, typically they're not approved for, for these type of messes.
I wasn't thinking of higher. Do you guys?
I mean, I, I think...
On such a, such a requirement?
I think it should be a requirement, but I, I think this is different than a fence in the fact that we are approving something with the purpose of screening here. That's what we're trying to do with this.
Yeah, and I don't think we would limit the height so much as, I'm less worried about the, I think it's green.
Right. So when Melissa mentioned four feet as being, did I understand correctly, that's the maximum height of a fence in a front yard? So, but I would recommend that we not use that as a gauge, but use that as kind of our starting point for agreeing hedge here, because we are approving a space that we are purposefully hiding.
Right. So you're?
So I'm thinking more of the four and a half to five and a half feet, which is kind of what appears to be there now, something about six feet, below six feet.
And like, so I've been, as we, actually get too much on the details because if we're going to trouble to, to create this private space, we probably don't want to maintain this kind of border.
Well, it's more so for what happens when the next people come in and they decide they want to rip out all of these bushes because they want their patio to have street view.
Yes, yeah. Okay, we can come, we can roll around back to that. I was just trying to get an idea for what people thought of that concept. Was there anyone else who wished to speak to us on this case? And again, if you could say your name and address, please.
I'm here between 2627 Broadway. I live in a property, you know, perhaps a white-lack, west of me. This is a very unique property. There are back-to-back cones with no rear yards. And I actually went out on Thursday to see how tall the trees, how tall the bushes were. And I think that this is a very unusual property and that you should support the petitioner today because it's beautiful from the street. They face the Metro Railroad. So for them to really cut down their bushes and have a height requirement, I think would really take away their privacy. I think the bushes are, I think they're about seven foot tall right now. I think it's a perfect height because it also is equal with their windows on the first floor. And I think that in the future, that if somebody wants this property and they wanted to come in and make changes, that they should come before you again and save the peace. I don't really think that their bushes should be limited to height because right now...
We're not limiting them. What we're saying is, we're basically saying that they either have to stay in place or somebody has to put back something that's sort of comparable.
Because it's, it's really nice, and maybe we have just a place to...
Yeah, we're not trying to alter the situation at all.
So I guess that you would see, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Hi, we have your name and address?
Yeah, mine is Gary Rosenski. I live at 1729 Chandler, Chris's about four houses away. And they have one street of Poplar, it's very unusual to do anyway, it's a base train. And a lot of their plots do not include them here, or very, very little. And sort of our neighborhood is always got urgent pieces, so I think a lot of these are sort of mixed, you know, trying to change the system. It just feels like it's very difficult to go down from their place down to the next intersection. You'll see that where Skipper has his jewelry, a little bit there, and then the little next. So it just feels like it's in the character of the gap, of the, of the, of the, I suppose.
Thank you. And was there anyone else who wished to speak with us regarding this case, if you? Okay, and Mr. Malani, do you have anything else before we close the record and begin our deliberations? No?
Well, I think Kimberly wants to do the right thing. She doesn't want to impact the neighborhood whatsoever. I think she's really going to think she can to make this a nice place for her family without impacting anybody, so.
Thank you. All right, if there's no other questions from the board, we'll close the record and begin our deliberations. Is that good? Yep. Okay. And with that, we'll close the record on 2619 Poplar Avenue and begin our deliberations. I think it's certainly unusual, sort of, the law, house type situation, so I don't think that is unfair whatsoever. And it's only really from that, it's only really from that standpoint, like, what I can...
So based on hardship, you're saying that we're going to, that variances need to?
I think in a more or less single-family neighborhood, to not be able to have enough space.
What kind of category?
I guess is something that, that certainly hinges. I was mentioning earlier a potential condition that you said you were looking at starting at.
I would say that would be a minimum starting point.
Okay, so what, what are you thinking?
I mean, I, I think it should be semi-private, which the landscape architect, Mr. Malani, said is somewhere in the four and a half to five and a half foot range. So I would say we take the minimum of that and say that any, if those bushes ever go missing for whatever reason, that they be replaced with something that is green, soft landscaping that would be starting at about four and a half feet.
Now, just to kind of throw a tiny little monkey wrench into that, are we going to make that requirement so that said new soft landscape installer slash owner would have to buy the shrubs or other plants already at that size? Or can they install something that's going to achieve that size?
And you're saying that that's pretty much doable, and I wouldn't want us to be like down at two feet thinking, waiting for things to grow for years.
I see what you're saying.
Okay.
I mean, if you plant something that grows quickly and it starts off at four feet, I don't think anyone's going to come hunting you down.
Right.
Something as long as it can quickly get back to that, that height, because the idea is to provide the screening from the street.
What's the maximum height of a fence around here?
That's what she was saying, in front yard.
So we want, we want to specify something above four feet, then the next person says, oh, they're allowed to have screening, six feet high?
Well, any in, I don't, correct, I might wrong, but you can have green, green buffer to whatever height you can make it.
You can grow a row of oak trees eight feet tall in your front yard if you want to.
There's a hardscape versus soft.
Right, but you know, one person wants to plant shrubs, I was going to say, well, specify.
And you tell them to put in a row of shrubs?
I don't, yeah, I was going to say, I don't have a problem telling them to put in shrubs.
Yeah.
I mean, if this, if this were a particular case and someone wanted to do this and put a six-foot fence up for privacy, I think most of us here would be willing to deny that. But because of the fact that this is an existing hedge that's providing that buffer, it's not as hard as a fence, especially some sort of a privacy fence. So having something like this is a little more...
Still a little bit less desirable in most neighborhoods to have a five-foot hedge along the front yard line, but it's more desirable. It's more desirable to certainly allow versus fence. All right, so then with that, with that in consideration, we will run through the standards for a major variation. And we only have the one variation with respect to the location, because as we've noted, we do not have any issues with respect to the lot coverage from previous sources. So with that, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. It appears that, generally speaking, the homeowners already use this space in a manner similar to that which is proposed, and I see no variation in the impact on the neighboring adjoining properties by this, by this change to the, to the front area. Step number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the ordinance. As we've noted, this is a fairly cut and dry standard, however, the very unique, as we will get to, aspect of the property does make this a situation in which the variation would be keeping. Step number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. And indeed, as we have discussed, it's a peculiar property that essentially has two, two front yards and no rear yard, and the majority of the side yard is taken up front with driveway, essentially eliminating the possibility for outdoor patio space within what is essentially a single-family area of the city. Therefore, it is certainly a peculiar property that would suffer particular hardship if the standards were carried through. The property owner would suffer particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. And as previously noted, because of the peculiar nature of the property, indeed, that hardship would be applied. Step number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. There's no evidence that the owners intend to extract additional income or move from the premises that this work is to be done, nor is there evidence that this work will substantially increase the property value of the property itself, so we will see that as well. Step number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property, and indeed, this scenario of the kind of two-front And indeed, this scenario of the kind of two-front facing home is not a new one and not created by the current owners. Standard number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the zoning board appeals. And having looked at what scenarios are available, there are virtually no other scenarios to accomplish usable outdoor space. And therefore, it would be the standard for least deviation. With that, is there a motion?
I would move the matter of CBA thirteen ZMJV zero zero seven five regarding twenty-six nineteen Poplar Avenue that we grant the requested zoning relief with the conditions that the property owner and all future property owners maintain a minimum height four and a half inch, four and a half inch, four and a half foot landscaping screen to shield the property from the front sidewalk and that the existing runoff be maintained.
Second motion. Just one quick thought. Would it be appropriate, I mean, especially if we can, to say so long that the green buffer is required so long as the patio is in place? Because otherwise, they would have to-
Well, no, because if they remove the patio, then-
I know, it's only- Do you have to say that, we have to say they don't need the green buffer if the patio is not there as part of the-
It's conditioned on the grant of the variation, so if they know-
So if the patio goes away, we don't have, they, they're conditioned.
So as long as they don't make use of the granted variation, they aren't-
Required to- Okay, then that's fine. Alright, so it's been made. Did you hear second? So the motion has been made and second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion is carried. We now seek your input. Okay, moving along. Our next sort of business is going to be eight oh two Florence Avenue. And when you're ready, you can read that into the record, Melissa.
Your end. Property owner applies for major zoning relief to construct an open porch in the street side yard. The applicant requests an open porch yard obstruction with a street side yard setback of two feet where a minimum thirteen point five feet is required. Zoning code section six four one nine A one. The zoning board of appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variance application submitted July thirty first, two thousand thirteen, standards form, zoning analysis, lattice survey dated November eighteenth, nineteen ninety-four, site plan, elevations, zoning map of property, image of property, spark meeting minutes of August fourteenth, two thousand thirteen, as well as two additional images of the existing porch that were provided by the applicant that were handed out at the beginning of tonight's meeting.
Okay, and if I could swear in anyone who wishes to speak with us regarding this case?
I'm alone tonight.
Alright, do you swear for and to the two throughout the proceedings proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. And again, if you could state your name and address for us.
My name is Karen Grant. I'm the property owner of eight oh two Florence and six hundred Washington. It has two addresses. It's one piece of property. There's a two flat at sixteen hundred Washington. There's a garage and driveway on Florence. And the eight oh two property is next to the driveway and the garage. What I'd like to do is take down the small front porch and expand it, make it a little bit larger. It wouldn't obstruct anyone's view or anyone's passage. It faces my garage. It doesn't even face the sidewalk. So it's, it's not, what do I want to say? It's not offensive in any way to anyone else. The porch that exists now is pretty much falling apart and needs to be redone. And I understand that I'm grandfathered in. If I wanted to just rebuild it the same way, there wouldn't be a problem. But it's very, very tiny and there's plenty of space there to make it a little bit larger. Also, I have to take down the porch to fix the chimney, which is in great need of repair. And so if you could see the rendering of the proposed plan, the new porch would go completely around the back of the chimney and not just chop the chimney in half. So I think aesthetically, it's a big improvement. It'll give me a little space outside and it's not offensive to anyone in any way. So I don't know what else I can tell you. Read the pictures of those.
Can you explain again what's going on with the two addresses on one property? Somebody please.
You know what? That's, that's a very good question. I've tried to separate this property because it's just almost gotten to be too much for me to take care of. But that's not a possibility. So I've decided to improve it instead. On the two, on the corner of Florence and Washington Street, there is a two flat that faces Washington. The address is sixteen hundred. Alright, if you go down Florence, if you're going south on Florence-
Okay, we're south on Florence from Washington.
Yes, there's a garage and a driveway. And then there's my house at eight oh two Florence. I believe the PIN number for the property, I don't know the PIN number, but I think it's listed under eight oh two Florence. But it's two addresses.
So is that really Melissa All One block of-
Yes, I'm not lying to you.
That is correct. It is all one property. It is legally non-conforming. This is in the zoning district that allows for two-family structures. But she has two separate structures. There are two principal structures on the property. And she is talking about the property that is-
It can't be separated because it doesn't meet the minimum standards, but there's-
Correct.
No opportunity to provide an exception for existing non-conforming situation to so to that.
And that was out of approval through the variance process.
So she can come to us.
And there is a property line here even though there isn't?
No, there is.
There's no property.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about any property line between the two buildings?
No, there's only- That's, yeah, we're only talking about street side yard setback.
Okay.
But here-
Is this a one where I couldn't find out the site?
There's only, there's a flat and then there's a fence.
Maybe I have to-
There's not an actual site. Do you don't have a rendering for the new construction section?
No, I was trying to find the site for plan, but I couldn't find it.
The site plan included is the plat of survey with the proposed porch drawn directly over the existing porch and showing that it is longer.
Okay, so this is her front yard.
My side yard. I don't have a front yard.
Yeah, but, but you live, you live in this-
The eight oh two, the small house. I don't live in two flat. I live in a-
So from your perspective, it's your front yard?
Well, I suppose.
Zoning wise, it's not, but I'm just trying to under, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get my mind about your world for a second and not the lot.
It's what I consider my front door because it opens up into my living room.
Right.
And if I were to move the porch back, my, I would walk out my front door and fall to the ground. So there really isn't any way to move it back, inconceivable way to make it further back from the street.
Okay, and we're not moving the structure any closer to the street than the structure already is.
No.
But we still need a sep, we still need a variance because we're making it because we make that.
So let me get this straight. There's two properties on this one place. Both of them face Florence, but none of them, but that's the side yard.
No, Washington, fifteen hundred is Washington.
Oh, okay.
They have a backyard and a side yard.
But I think, I think I, not separate issue, but I think I heard that potentially you can come and call us for a variance to separate the properties, so.
Okay, one thing at a time.
Not just clarifying that little conversation, that side conversation there, so. Because it seemed like that might be a scenario. Okay. Alright, I think I got now. Any other questions up here? Was there anyone for the record from the public who wished to speak with us regarding the case for eight oh two Florence? Oh, no, but there's none. Anything else that you wanted to add?
I did have several neighbors, but one's an emergency vet and the other one had North Shore poor old practice night, so they couldn't be here. But I, from the letters that you sent out to people within five hundred feet of my property, I didn't have anyone stop and say, that shouldn't happen. It doesn't look right. People were in favor of it even though no one's here, so.
And Melissa, it seems that we're still well within our curvy surface coverage, et cetera, for this lot, so that's, so that's not an issue at all either. We're just dealing with that setback. That is correct. Okay, then if there's nothing further, we'll close the record and begin our deliberations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'll just sit right here.
Thoughts, comments before we run through the standards? My portrait.
I love you just.
What she said, you are a portrait.
Me and Jane Jacobs.
Alright, then with that, we will close the record. I'm sorry, you're, sorry, we will run through the standards. And now we're considering the standards for a major variation for the side yard setback of two, street side yard setback of two feet where a minimum of thirteen point five feet is required. Standard number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. As the owner has mentioned, there has been no adverse feedback from the neighborhood. And given the fact that porch is no closer to the street side yard than, the slightly larger porch is no closer to the street side yard than the existing porch and as well the existing structure. And there's no reason to believe that it will have substantial adverse impact on the enjoyment or use of properties in the neighboring area. Standard number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. And indeed, it's the intent of the zoning ordinance to promote the use and enjoyment of properties both inside and out and to afford viability of open front porches for residents to use. And the location of this porch, while technically in the street side yard, will act very much as an opportunity for front porch for this, for this dwelling unit. Standard number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. There's been discussion about the fact that this property is an existing non-conforming situation with two separate dwelling structures on the existing lot. Therefore, the situate, this older structure close to the street side yard creates a scenario that is peculiar to the property. Standard number four, the property owner was subject to particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from mere inconvenience if strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. The property owner has indicated that she has looked into the possibility of even moving the door. However, that is not feasible given the layout of her home. And therefore, in order to replace the existing porch structure with a little bit more space for outdoor use, it would require a variance and therefore would be a particular hardship versus a practical difficulty. Standard number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. The property owner indicates that she plans to continue to use this property. And there's no evidence that this slightly enlarged porch will substantially impact the value of the property in such a way as to create significant additional income as well. Standard number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. This is very similar to many of the, many of the old lots in Evanston that have since had their rear portion subdivided, even though this one has, has not. And all of those situations as, as with this, were not created by the current residents and therefore not by somebody having an interest in the property. Standard number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified for the zoning board of appeals. And again, as noted, this revised porch replaces an existing porch with the exact same setup. And this is a very minimal request. That is their motion.
I would move the matter of thirteen ZMJV zero zero seven three regarding eight zero two Florence Avenue that we approved the request to the zoning relief, provided that the property be developed in compliance with the documents, testimony submitted with this case.
It's been moved. And second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. We now seek your input. Okay, the next item on our agenda is twenty-two hundred Gray Avenue. And we're ready for that to be read in the record. You're ready, Melissa?
You and Janine Martin and James Christopher Nepples, Nepples, property owners, appeal the zoning administrator's decision to deny zoning relief, case number thirteen ZMJV zero zero five nine, section six four six seven F three A of the zoning ordinance that states the maximum fence height in a required street side yard is four feet. The applicant applied for zoning relief to construct a four-point-three-foot solid wood fence with a one-point-two-foot lattice top for a total fence height of five-point-six feet in the street side yard. The applicant was granted relief from section six four six seven F two B to permit a fence in the street side yard, but was denied relief from section six four six seven F three A to exceed the maximum of four-foot height in the street side yard. The fence variance was partially granted to allow a three-foot solid wood fence with a one-foot lattice top for a total fence height of four feet in the street side yard. The zoning board of appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record are: Appeal applications submitted August second, two thousand thirteen. Appeal exhibits submitted by applicant. Standards form. Fence variance applicant, application submitted June fourth, two thousand thirteen. Plat of survey dated August thirty first, two thousand nine. Site plans. Minor variance, public notice. Letter of objection. Minor variance, staff standards form. Staff and applicant correspondence. Minor variance, public notice of approval. Images of property. Aerial view of property. And zoning map of property.
Okay, this time, can we swear in anyone who wishes to speak with us regarding the standard? Do you swear for and to the two of us for this proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And again, as you begin speaking, please state your name and address.
Hi there, I'm Chris Nepples. I'm the property owner. Our address is twenty-two hundred Gray Avenue, Evanston, Illinois, six oh two oh one. This is Janine.
Are you guys Janine Martin? Okay, thank you.
We initially looked into this project because we have two small children and we have a very small yard between our garage and our house. And we're seeking an area where our children can play safely. And this is a solution that we, we came up with to achieve that goal. Allow our kids to play in a area where they, they can't get out into the street or out in the yard. So when we applied, I hope we were granted the, I think it's the two-